Will the Secretary take the roll?
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Murray Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
For Mr. President, third, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 11th, 2013.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay.
Motion carries. Now we have a report and recommendation, East Potter Street rezoning. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I was preparing this memo, it seemed prudent to at least go forward at a committee meeting and have this topic be open for discussion as opposed to staff actually making a recommendation of what we need to do over there. There's an area of the city along East Potter Street that is roughly from Central Avenue east to Pine Lane that historically has always been zoned either manufacturing or now with our new zoning classifications, it's zoned industrial, which allows a lot of uses that you wouldn't typically see in an area next to a residential area. And it's kind of been a lot of issues with those buildings over the years as far as compliance with zoning requirements, as far as compliance to property maintenance standards. And I think it's time, it's been brought to my attention by a couple of the elected officials, that it's really time for Wooddale to kind of zero in on this area and come up with a solution that's going to work best not only for the city of Wooddale but also for the property owners. So maybe what we'll do is we'll start with a slideshow. There are some photos here that Alderman Lazara took, oh, probably about a month or six weeks ago with some existing conditions. And this is typical as to what these properties might look like at the end of a winter season. They kind of speak for themselves. But this is looking west from probably the Ash Street Crossing, I believe. There's a contractor's yard there. And you can see by the end of the winter, the, these areas are looking pretty poor. One of the biggest issues here as far as aesthetics is this is basically the eastern gateway into the city for anybody riding the Metro train. This is kind of their first view of Wooddale when they're coming into town. It doesn't really present the picture that I think we would like people to see. So after these photos were taken, we had our code enforcement officer, Joe Johnson, go over, talk to these owners again because, as I say, through the years, this is a constant enforcement problem. Several of these property owners have been issued citations in the past. Some of these property owners have been taken to court to get their sites cleaned up and to force them to operate within the allowable parameters of the zoning ordinance. So this is kind of what it looks like now. The area's been cleaned up, yet again, some of these uses are still not the most attractive. There's the contractor's yard, stuff has been neatly stacked. So again, technically, these properties are in compliance to the zoning ordinance and to the property maintenance code, but they don't present that welcoming of a photo when you first come into town. So the options that we have for this area, and this is something that's been talked about and never really pushed forward before, the first option would be to rezone this property to either residential zoning or commercial zoning, something that would not allow the types of uses that are there now. Rezoning an area like that and forcing people to change the uses of their building or basically tear their buildings down and build something that would be in compliance to the new zoning standards, I think is going to be a major headache for the city, aside from the fact that we were going to have to have an amortization period, and I would think a minimum of a 10-year amortization period for people to change these uses in the buildings. It may even be longer than that. And at that, at what point would we, if people refuse to comply, you know, do we extend the amortization period or do we then start taking these people to court? I mean, at what point does it become a taking, so to speak, of their property? These are all city attorney questions. But that would be one alternative. Another alternative would be to work with the property owners, Metro and the city, and maybe go forward with a very proactive landscaping project. Go with planting some sort of tree line along the rear of these properties, between the properties and the Metro tracks, with the type of vegetation that would provide screening and would keep its foliage all year, arborvitae or some sort of an evergreen tree. Plant those, get something that, I mean, arborvitae, as Alderman Roy Wesley knows, I mean, there's probably 50 different varieties, they all grow to different heights, they grow to different widths, but arborvitae are typically used to effectively build a vegetative screening on areas where it's needed. So that might be one solution to talk about. The other thing would be to, you know, just continue to aggressively enforce the property maintenance code, which will force the people to keep their property at least neat and somewhat orderly, yet you're still going to see some of the things like this contractor's yard. That's an allowable use, as long as stuff is stacked neatly, they can do that. So I really just wanted to bring this matter to the council's attention, see what kind of ideas you as elected officials might have, and basically get some direction for staff as to what you want us to pursue.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
John, we had those problems with, when we had the problems with the signs, and it was a major problem. Can't we have them put up a fence, a decorative fence or something like that to block that? And use it as a cost sharing with the city and maybe use it for advertising too?
Mr. Forrest?
Having the property owners put up a privacy fence would definitely be one direction we could take. This last photo is the back of one of the recycling businesses. As you can see, they do have a fence up, yet it still does not effectively screen it. I mean, the highest fence that we would allow unless we wanted to make special consideration for this area would be an eight-foot-high fence. If the purpose of going forward with this project is to improve the looks of this area, excuse me, for people riding the train, we're going to need some kind of a barrier taller than eight feet because you're just going to see right over it and we're not really going to accomplish that much, in my opinion.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, first of all, I don't know if I'm in favor of rezoning this because you can rezone it all you want, but the point is, those people are still entitled, you just can't throw them out. I mean, we rezoned the area before and those, some of those businesses are still there, so rezoning is out for me. The option that I have with this is, and in a way, I'm kind of in favor of putting some bushes along there, but the problem is that I, I talked to Mr. Forrest is, is how, how much is it by the railroad crossing of easement that they're going to have to have, you know? We're going to have to contact Metro because I don't know how close these trees or whatever, and if those branches go on their track area, that's my concern on that. In the meantime, until this council makes up their mind which direction they would do, I would highly suggest that staff keeps hounding them to clean that up. The other thing is, if we gave them citations and we appear in court, once they get one citation or once they get one letter and they clean it up and it comes back to, you go back to a month later, to me, it ain't another letter. Just issue the ticket, appear in court. These letters that we have done in the past to businesses, we give them a letter, they clean up for 38, then we go back to square one and we issue them another letter and give them another chance to clean up. My concern is if it ain't done after first letter and it's clean and they cite, it's a waste of our time to keep giving them letters, they clean up for 38. Hit the book when done. We've been trying to clean this up for, like you said, for years. Enough is enough. So I'm in favor of doing bushes if that's what we do. The fence option is something on the table that maybe, I don't know. My concern is the Metro. My concern is also, I believe there's a drainage ditch back there because I believe it did show in those pictures, a drainage ditch. I believe Frank Lazaro, those pictures did show that there was a drainage ditch. And if you look at some of those pictures, some of that stuff's already in the drainage ditch, so why are they storing it in the drainage ditch? For flooding issues? Is that on their property or is that on our right-of-way in the rear?
Mr. Forrest?
The property lines do extend pretty much to the ditch line there.
Is that our ditch line?
No, it's Metro's.
Well, again.
And I have had contact with Metro over the last couple of days. I've talked to one of the contacts that I made while we were doing the train station and approached him with, you know, the alternative of putting landscaping trees and shrubs in there. He seemed to think that that would be allowable by Metro and he even indicated to me that there's a chance that Metro would grant us an easement right along the edge of their right-of-way to do that. My thought is, depending on the direction that I get from, from the council this evening, what I'd like to do is actually put a meeting together with all the property owners in that affected area, get together with them at City Hall here some evening, explain what's going on, the concerns that the city has, and find out if they're going to be willing to partner with us if we decide to go with the landscaping route and maybe either give us a couple of feet off the rear of their property, if we can get a couple of feet on Metro's. My thought is, plant, if we're going to be able to go with some kind of vegetation on there, plant it right on the property lines. Get the property owners involved where they agree to water these trees until they get established and kind of bring them in the loop on it as opposed to having a very adversarial relationship with them. Try it and see how it works. If it fails, then we can just hold their feet to the fire.
Alderman Lazara?
John, you know where I stand on this. I mean, the eyesore even after, you know, the cleanup is still pretty bad. The trees, you explained to me that we might be getting trees on a deal that there's some developer that owes us trees. So the cost to tree sounds pretty minimal to me. I like the trees because we're Wooddale, not FenceDale, so I would prefer definitely trees. But the, there's other issues there, John, and, you know, that's why, you know, again, I don't want to rezone anyone. But the other day, I walked less than a block and I counted 60 cars within a block full of gasoline, oil, bad cars. Cars that are in such bad shape, are they holding the gas or is it dripping on the ground? There's 60 cars in less than a block. 3:00 in the morning, I had people calling me saying, Frank, they're delivering a car 3:00 in the morning, the lights are on, there's guys talking, you can hear the... So even though, yeah, my big concern is, is the way it looks, my other concern are the 60 cars. And if I remember right, last year, one of those buildings not too far from that caught on fire. You know, that area scares me, guys. It was that by Ash and Irving, near Reedie Electric, right? That building?
Yeah, correct. That was a building on Irving Park.
Yeah, that area scares me. Scares me a lot. Too many cars in just such a short span full of gasoline and oil.
Mr. Forrest?
And that's one of the issues that are kind of inherent with this industrial zoning. It allows car auto body shops, and I think we have two or three of them there. It allows car repair shops where we have a couple of those as far as somebody delivering a car at 3:00 in the morning and making a lot of racket. If I was that resident, I would, my next call would have been to the police department.
Yeah, well, it was to me. And, you know, so again, I'm not looking to rezone, but I'm, I'm looking to see if we can stop that type of thing here, you know, with delivering cars at 3:00 in the morning. Is there an ordinance that we can look at if we already have those on the books?
I'm not aware of one, but I can check and see what restriction we might have on that.
And then, I don't know if there's anything we can do about 60 cars that are bumper-to-bumper, door-to-door within a block. You know, that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to live across the street from that. And that's the problem, I mean, it's a residential across the street from, from that. Something we inherited, so. I guess we really don't have a lot of questions, John, just, you know, a lot of comments about why, you know, we really need to look at that besides that being our doorway. There's people that live across the street from, from junkyards.
Mr. Forrest?
Well, I mean, if we could get a consensus on how you want me to proceed, if at this point it seems like some sort of landscaping barrier would be the preferable way to go, I'll contact all the property owners there, try to put together a meeting here at City Hall, you know, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, something like that. See how many of those property owners we can get in here. And I say, kind of get them invested in this, bring them into the loop and try and work with them as partners. If it doesn't work, then we can always take out the big hammer, but...
Yeah.
Alderman Wesley?
John, I would think, bring the businesses in and talk about it with them and see if they come up with some ideas. I was just thinking too, Metro does spray their tracks with a chemical that kills vegetation on the stones and stuff, and if you use, if you use bushes or trees along their easement there, you might have killing the trees with that very easily, so... But I don't know if you knew that or not.
No, and I'll check with Metro to find out, you know, how that would be impacted. I'm waiting for contact back from their engineering department. I've been talking to the public relations department. He's been talking to some of their staff. The last inquiry I had from him was he wanted geographically to know exactly the area we were talking about, so I emailed him that information earlier today, so.
I just don't want to plant bushes and then go by and spray and go buy bushes.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I am in favor of getting together with the business community. I do think it's the first step, the right approach, and looking at the landscaping, and I do agree that it's got to be something that will live there, you know, that is not going to get killed by whatever they're spraying, but let's work with the businesses, try and improve the appearance. And then also, is there a way to change the zoning so it only goes into effect after change of ownership of a business? And then the new owner would be subject to the new zoning? And then, I'm thinking, once we put that in place, perhaps that we could start helping them move to other locations.
Mr. Forrest?
I will certainly find out from the city attorney. I have a meeting with Mary Dixon tomorrow morning about another matter, but I'll kind of run this by her as well.
Thank you.
John, let me throw in, I think there is a general consensus that we need to talk to the businesses and try to develop a plan, be proactive with them. And to Alderman Lazara's point, I think we need to look into the zoning. Even though it might be allowed to have junk cars there, there might be some issues. I know some sites you're not allowed to store the gas in the tanks, the tanks have to be dried, there's got to be some other rules and regulations that come into play. They might not be a city ordinance, it could be a county ordinance or whatever, but as we're looking at this whole thing, let's look at it as a package, to see what we could do to clean up the screening part of it and then look at how they're kind of being used, maybe to address some of the things that Alderman Lazara brought up. Is that enough information? I mean, you, you have direction then?
That'd keep me busy for a while.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley, one more question.
That brings up a valid point. If there is gasoline stored out there and we're talking about, well, maybe we should also CC all our documents that are finding out there to the fire district and let the fire district, because I'm sure there's EPA standard that they have to obey by with those tanks and all that, because I don't know, but I think they should be involved in it too. Now that we brought up the bushes and I just have one concern, who's going to maintain these bushes? Who's going to trim these trees? We can't get a, we can't get Boom back there to trim them or how are we going to trim these trees? I mean, if we're going to invest this money, I mean, how, is it our, going to be our liability? I mean, our responsibility, maintain them? And then, if that's the case, are we going to have to have a flag person on the railroad crossing area to trim these trees because we have a flag guy where we did the sidewalk by the railroad tracks? Or is that going to be a wave that we don't have to have a flag person?
These are all things we can look into and I'll, I'll check that with Metro. And I would think before we would decide ultimately on what sort of tree or shrub or vegetation we would plant, we would consult with a landscape expert and find out. I'd like to get the lowest maintenance that's going to give, be the most effective on the screening, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Items for consideration for future meetings, Community Park Town Center Vision Plan, May 23rd, Lakota Group City of Wooddale Wayfinding and Signage Design Project, May 23rd, Amendment to Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5.101 of the Municipal Code, May 23rd, and Approval for Staff for Minor Zoning Variations, May 23rd. So it sounds like May 23rd's going to be pretty busy. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hot order, Public Health and Safety Judicial Committee. Let the record show that same people are present. Motion approved in minutes, April 11th, 2013. I make the formal motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Report and recommendation, business request liquor license. Deputy Chief Murray, I mentioned to Chief Festa that when I do my committee that I'll just turn it over to him, so, there you go.
I'm going to throw it back to you then.
Let's see what you have.
Well, Alderman Wesley, in talking to Chief Festa, we have no business to bring to the table this evening.
Well, we have the presenters, so staff really has no point, I mean, no presentation. So we had a group come in the last council meeting, they requested to come back with more information, so staff doesn't have anything to add. I think the presenters are here though, but the question is, we have a liquor license request and you have the staff report originally and you guys asked the group to come back out, so they're here tonight.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is there one or two here tonight?
There's one for sure, two.
There is two here tonight because there was only one list on agenda. It's a report recommends business license request for a liquor license. I think two, that's one.
Yes, licenses.
Yeah, it's plural, "s."
All right. So who's going to present? I mean, we already heard of one.
Well, I think they were, you requested them to come back, so they, they're here back today.
And do we have any, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead.
Do we have update, who's the other business license requesting?
Well, that presenter's here as well and she wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm assuming she's going to want to speak tonight, so.
A company called Daddies.
All right, so, who's going first?
Let me, let, are you, you want to be recognized? Okay, good.
I just have one thing to say. I'm new to the city council, but just about two months ago, we turned two businesses that have already been in town for many, many years. We turned their liquor licenses down and now we're going to consider additional liquor licenses, so that bothers me a little bit that, you know, there's businesses that are here in town and we're going to listen to businesses coming into town. We may give them a liquor license and we're not going to give our current businesses a license. Thank you.
Okay. Let's hear from, well, we got the presentation from Pine Grove. I guess we're just here, I guess we should do a fair shot for Daddies, right? Either, I don't care. You could go first. Go ahead, you got to go to the mic. First, we need your name. Do you need address too? Name and your company.
Okay, I'm Richard Buckley, Pine Woods Restaurant Group. This is Gary Weeks, also Pine Woods Restaurant Group. Met you two weeks ago, talked a little bit about our business. The reason I wanted to make a statement, we were advised that one of the Aldermen had called on a number and the number rang that it wasn't available, so they wondered if we'd been in business. I did a little presentation, but I wanted to just, the reason I wanted to make a statement is to clear a couple of things up. One of our previous groups, Richards, I brought my shirt. On our menu, because it doesn't say Richards, we changed it to Molly's, the graphic artist, there's a mock-up of a phone number that's 555-555-5555. That does not ring, that's a mock-up. And it goes to one, any street avenue, so that's a mock-up from the graphic artist. So I just wanted to make that clear. Our business phone rings to me, we get calls every day, so that, it just raised a question and I thought that we should address that and let you know that, that that, that is from a graphic mock-up only on our, on a menu that has been in use for us. Go ahead, Gary.
No, that, Richard had mentioned that, and so we wanted to kind of clarify, someone had asked us what our background was and did we really have delis before and what happened to the delis? And we're just going to take a quick minute just to give you the history again of who we are and what we do. So we just did another PowerPoint, which is going to be really quick. This is going to be very, very fast. Richard and I started delis in Oregon in 1994, and Richard will show them, and what we ended up doing was we sold the delis to a company by the name of Elmer's. They ultimately were on the NASDAQ and about six years ago, a group of the shareholders bought the company and made it private. I currently am on that board of directors and Richard, and a major shareholder, and Richard also is a major shareholder. But we're in the restaurant business and that's the thing that we wanted to convey as we did at the last meeting, and Richard will just...
So I pulled this off of Urban Spoon, just took a quick shot. This is, this is a couple of units in of what we started. I guess our point, we just wanted to give you our background, show that they're still in existence, actually, so Richard's named after me. We started these in 94, here's a couple of them in the area. We also started a group of Coopers, those were ours as well, they're still in existence as well, these are in Salem area. That, those restaurants, we sold them, we were solicited by a company to buy our chain and we sold them, and that was to Elmer's. Elmer's also still in existence, which we are the shareholders and on the board. Elmer's, this is one of their, I thought this was appropriate for the meeting, but funny, this is one of the ads, so this is a current ad that's on the website. Elmer's is a very, to, if you know Culvers here, you would know Elmer's there. So it's very similar, very well-known brand, heavily marketed and a solid product. This is just some of the locations of Elmer's, and they're, again, the point just being that they bought our chain, so we established a couple of chains in Oregon of the similar concept. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, and that, we just want to let you know that, that they bought our chain, they're still in existence, that's one of the, Elmer's sign, it's a full restaurant. They are, they are not, we are not representing Elmer's here in Illinois. We have a number of our investors, as we've mentioned before, in Chicago. One of them was going to be here, had another dinner engagement, we want several of them to come, and we do have other investors. So we just wanted to let you know who we are. We do not represent Elmer's here again, and I wanted to be very specific about that, but they, some people had asked us, you know, what had happened with our Elmer, with our, our delis and that, and they've been bought by Elmer's. delis and that, and they've been bought by Elmer's. So, we just wanted to just clarify that if anyone had any questions.
We'd love to answer questions if.
The state of Oregon?
Yes, sir.
They allowed video gambling?
They do indeed. In fact, the Illinois gaming laws, we understand it was patterned after what has been a successful program in Oregon. And we adopted gaming very early on, in early 1994, into our food service units. And we have, we had a great marriage. We have a great food business, and then we use the gaming to augment the revenue, if you will. It helps pay rents, fees, maintenance, and that sort of thing. But all, the units that I described to you that are still in existence, we started those, including food and beverage and gaming. The way, the way we run our business, food and beverage is a huge part of the business. In fact, greater than the, than the video gaming. But we certainly enjoy some of the revenues from the gaming to help pay the entire business. We generate sales tax. We have shared gaming revenues. We hire a ton of employees, and we're a real business from the start. We are about business. We don't take it lightly. We invest in the communities. You want to mention about.
Yeah, well, yeah, and we are, we are a restaurant, and it's quite obvious when we do get a liquor license, which we mentioned at the last time, it's very secondary to our business. It's a requirement if you do video gaming. But obviously, we cannot sit here and tell you where you're going to be a restaurant, which we are, in a very important spot in this community, and next year, come back if we do not perform to the satisfaction of the people that are before us, and present something much different in a year. We have to come back in front of you folks to get another liquor license. So, we're not going to tell you one thing today, and then hope on hope that we're presenting something different. So, we are a restaurant, and that's what we be. Of course, we've talked with Kevin. The location, as we mentioned at the last meeting, is very close to the rail station, and we feel that we can really offer a service to this community. We think that area's been vacant for some time. I think when we would take it over, it would really make that area and that part of town. I think it would be very positive for the community itself. Oh, yeah, and we are going to be in a couple other communities, and actually, in the other communities, which we could tell you, we have two buildings in escrow, that we're not just renting spaces. One of them's a 5,500 square foot building in Loves Park. Another one is a building in Rockford. So, we're just not coming and saying, oh, gosh, we're going to rent a thing. We hope this works, because we are making an investment in the community. We didn't find a building that was suitable for our needs here to purchase, but if that opportunity came up, we certainly would do it. And like I say, we certainly, we're going to close on one here in a couple of days.
We're going to work on Kevin.
Yeah. But anyway, that's who we are. The one other thing I wanted to mention, Richard's very modest. He is, his restaurant background speaks for itself. He also is a restaurant consultant, one of the most successful businesses in the El Camino Real, right, close to Stanford University, is a restaurant called The Office, and it's, it is a bar. Richard doesn't own it. He did it as a consulting basis, picked the location. It is extremely successful. It's been in business for three years, but it has flat iron steaks and burgers and things like this. There is also a very high-end restaurant near Lake Tahoe that Richard also does consulting on and just moved it for the people, and that restaurant now has tripled their business. He's also developed and done juice bars for people and things like that. So, his business is very, very, very comprehensive. And I hate to brag on him, but he certainly knows what he's doing in the restaurant business. So, that, any, any questions, you know, we're here to answer them tonight.
Alderman Lazar?
You know, I guess it's not that, I believe that you could probably run this very successful. It's not really your background that is making me apprehensive about allowing this, other liquor license. My question is, would you open up a place here without liquor license, if we would say no to you?
No.
Okay, so it hinges on that.
Well, at this point, I can tell you, we've run, I have personally run restaurants with and without, over a period of 35 years, with and without a gaming component. At this point in my career, knowing what I know now, it's a valuable component, and a license is required to run that component.
A liquor license?
So, I would also not, if you asked me, would you start a fine dining restaurant with a bar and restaurant, I personally would not do that as well, because of the sheer volume of work required, even though I can make that successful.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, I could just go? I don't have to ask?
That's how I run mine.
All right. Thank you.
Until I say stop.
I'd like to. So, if you got a liquor license, and we were apprehensive about you having gambling, would you not put gambling in?
No, I think I'd go back to the same, my same, for us, our concept, which we've developed over a 20-year period, is to include gaming and food and beverage.
Okay. So, I think that's, that was kind of clear before, but it seemed like, a little bit fuzzy on, you know, what was important to you. And I think what's important to you is the whole package. You like the gambling, you like the liquor license, and you like the deli.
Liquor license the least, to be quite honest. And, and as Richard has stated before, the video gaming just supplements what you do with this. You know, we open these restaurants, and it's a three, four-year build-out before you get any profit. The gaming usually will allow you to break even in about 12 months to 18 months.
Okay. See, we're the city. We're really new to this. We still have, I believe it's eight businesses that have applied for the poker and video poker. Guess my apprehensive is, is that, you know, here's a company, a business that's been in Wooddale for all these years. They came to us. We said, okay, well, we'll allow this because we wanted to help them. If I start bringing in other businesses, they're going to look at me like, thanks, Frank. You know, you didn't even give us a chance to see if this would work, and we're already bringing in outside businesses. That's, that's, that's a big thing, guys.
It very, it definitely is. There's one thing that I want to mention, and I think this is, this is very common with most of the villages, and they're very conscious of what's going on, you know, in this, in this type of business. And we had one village ask us, I think they were going to get like 10 establishments that were going to have video gaming, and there would be five machines in each establishment. So, five times 10 meant that they were going to have 50 machines, you know, in their community. They were very concerned about it. And, of course, our experience from Oregon is that the people will, will gamble, you know, whether they go to Indian casinos or whatever. And that our business and the deli business, and even including bars, is still such a minor part. To give you an example, like in Elgin, there's the Riverboat Casino. They have over 1,100 machines, just in that one area, and that gives you the scope of what gambling is. Not that we're encouraging it or, you know, anything, just, you know, what it is. And of course, as you know, there's a lot of Indian casinos and things in Michigan and that, that advertise on the stations here in the greater Chicago area, because they know that people are going to go and gaming. I would say to you that if a city of this size had 20 establishments like this, it would not, none of them would hurt. They would, they would, I'm not, they would, they would support each other. Very similar to, like when McDonald's builds, you build a Burger King across the street, and then you get a Jack in the Box or something like that, and you know, when you stop somewhere, there is a, and I'm not saying that you want to, you know, you don't want to overdo it or oversaturate it, but the communities, because people enjoy, you know, gaming. And like, like I said, our type of gaming is very much not for happy hour or anything like that. It's just for casual, along with our food. Because most of the people that will come to our establishment will not participate in the gaming, and a lot of them will not participate in the liquor. So, you know, that's just who we are. We, you know, that's, that's our concept.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, before we go any further on this, you're getting all the questions. Daddies, come on up. Oh, sure.
With the, before you guys leave, one, one last.
They're not leaving.
With the other restaurants, whether those were Richards, Coopers, Elmer's, sound like you developed a lot of restaurants. There's investors involved.
Yes, sir.
You sold them off. So, obviously, this is a set up and sell type of business model. Do you intend to do the same thing here? It's just a long-term investment? Do you guys have any money of your own in? Because you're saying investors. So, I just want to know where you guys stand in the whole equation.
So, we, we do have money of our own in, and we, we do the heavy lifting, to be quite honest. We, we find them, source them, build them out, establish them, run them. We're anticipating about a 10-year run, and that's sort of, in our view, that's the life cycle of a concept. If, within that 10 years, would we blend with somebody else fold in? That's a possibility. But really, in my view, a restaurant concept has about a 10-year run. Not McDonald's, not Burger King, but small private chains that we establish. So, ultimately, we're not in it to start them today and sell them tomorrow. In fact, most of our leases prevent that, and that seems to be typical, and we're, we're fine with that. But at some point, we would potentially fold in and be greater, buy others, we don't know. But we're not in and out.
No, and I, I think the case in point is, like, we sold to Elmer's, we could have sold out for cash and walked. We sold out for cash and stock, and I currently am the largest stockholder in the company now, so we certainly didn't walk away from it. Richard's one of the largest. And I got to tell you, I was a little younger then, and so in my particular case, I don't know how much longer, but we're not here to just turn something real quick. And I know that, you know, the investors I'm speaking of and everything, you know, would continue owning it. So, you know, no, we're not coming in to just do something for a year or two and then walk away.
Our minimum, our minimum leases, what we do, we do a five and a five. So, that, we sort of look out 10 years. We do a five with an option, it takes us in five, we commit for five years, and we would commit to Kevin for five years. And that, we take that seriously. We put a personal guarantee. I put my name on it, and Gary puts his. So, this isn't talk, gee, it didn't work out. No, we, we back it up with our wallet and our energy. So, we're, we're a long-term player.
Okay. Move over a little, so the young lady could have some at the table.
Thank you, by the way.
Could you, that was who you are and, who you are and?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me this evening. My name is Laura Tennyson, and I'm here representing Daddies. And similar to Mr. Buckley's business, we began in Oregon, but we actually began in 1992. We've been operating our businesses for 20 years. There are 175 Daddies locations in the western states, as well as now some Illinois locations and communities similar to Wooddale. Although Wooddale's very unique, and we really want to move into Wooddale. We, we also have a longevity plan of those locations. We, we've only closed one, and that wasn't by choice. The area was rezoned in Oregon. In 20 years, we've not ever had a liquor license suspended, revoked, or penalized. They take their alcohol sales seriously, but again, it's an ancillary part of their business. They're a country kitchen concept. It was designed as an alternative to the traditional sports bar, and it's not a, even a five or a 10-year plan. We're on a 20-plus plan. Once Daddies lays its roots, it really integrates into the community as a whole, and there are no televisions in the facilities. It's literally designed like you're walking into somebody's grandmother's kitchen. You know, no TVs. There's a, there's a full kitchen, more commercial, there's obviously a commercial kitchen and a full menu, but it's a place where older women generally, everybody's welcome, but it tends to draw women over the age of 45. 72% of their customers are women. 82% of those women are over the age of 45. It's, they place these locations in well-lit shopping centers. They, women sometimes set up their book clubs in Daddies locations, and they, again, the video gaming license requires a liquor license, which is the portion of it that, you know, it's obviously ancillary again to their restaurant and other merchandise sales.
I hope men aren't forbidden to your restaurant.
Pardon?
Men are not forbidden to your restaurant, are they?
No, no. It's welcome to everybody. It just, it tends to attract. It's designed to be a cozy, well-lit, welcoming area.
Okay. What, did, did video gambling start in Oregon, or what's going on here? It seems everyone's coming from Oregon.
Probably because it did, it has been there for, it's, it's a very early adopter. There's other places, of course, that, you know, Montana, there's a number of spots, of course.
All right. Let's open up for some questions. We're going to call you Alderman Tony, because your last name's difficult.
Thank you. This is addressed to Molly's Deli.
Tony, did you want to add something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. There was just one other thing. I apologize. As to Mr. Councilman Lazar's question earlier to Richards about other businesses, currently, this is an underserved demographic. This isn't something that's going to pull business from any of the established businesses here, or pretty much in any other community, because Daddies is really a unique concept. It's catering to a typically, there's a void in the community right now that it's not being fulfilled by other businesses, and obviously, we would like to fill that.
Okay.
I would agree with the underserving, self-serving, as that sounds, and it probably is, but I think there's opportunity in the niche that, and we're not here, of course, to represent Daddies, but the niche that they represent is different than what we represent. But there's a need, and there's a desire by the community. We know that. That's why we're here. That's why we have an investment in that.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to Alderman Tony.
How do you handle the under 21 crowd when they walk into your business?
We handle it two ways. Because we're food-oriented, generally, we isolate an area for gaming and isolate that for 21 and over, and then monitor it. And we're required by the gaming, the IGB, to monitor that in a certain way, which we do. In some cases, in small locations, we have 21 and over only. But generally, depending on where the location is and the size, and we've, you know, we, we want the blessing of the community before we invest a lot of money and sunk costs into our layout. But we will isolate, anyway, to answer your question specifically, we'll isolate that area and control that.
So, this is not the way it's going to look? It's going to be isolated? It's going to be?
Some of them, the way we isolate is actually with a, with a half-wall. We don't have a visual separation. There, again, there's differences. So, in Oregon, for instance, you must maintain a visual separation between gaming machines and the general public under 21. That's not the case here with the IGB. You can put them on the street, they can, you can look through the window. Now, to us, I don't think it makes sense, but there's not a restriction. So, what we'll do is build them with half-walls, generally.
See, the, the name is kind of deceiving, Molly's Deli. So, if a family wants to have a sandwich, and they bring their kids in there, they're going to have a sandwich at Molly's Deli. And then you walk in, and you see these machines. I've seen these machines in these bars. I mean, they got the bells and the whistles. I mean, when somebody wins, they're going like crazy. So, you know, I can expect a family, you know, if they, for instance, they go to a bar, they know what to expect in a bar. But if a family walks in here and with their kids, it's going to have a different, we're going to get complaints. Maybe, maybe it should be named Molly's Lounge and Bar?
We could, we, you know, we've named, these were Richard's Deli and Pubs. We did not prevent minors from coming in. There, again, we isolate them and screen them, but I can tell you, we will get a big food business. We do a lot to go. We build a big lunch trade. will get a big food business. We do a lot to go. We build a big lunch trade. I think our job, if, to do it properly, is to maintain that those items can work together. And we separate them, but they, so we can, if we create an environment that's only gaming, we will drive away our food business. And if we create an area that's strictly food and we can't get into gaming at all, then that kills that. So it's our job to, to make that work. I think that we can, we, we believe we can work them complementary rather than opposed. And I don't, I, I would believe you would not have any sort of complaints that, gee, we thought this was a deli, we can't get a sandwich here. They'll be lining up to get sandwiches. We know that. So, there again, I, I'll leave it at that.
Is anyone curious on how much is, how much we made so far with this video gambling? I guess not.
About three thousand.
Let's go to Alum and Eugene West. Excuse me. Quite, the, I take it these questions are open for both of them, either one?
This one's strictly to Daddie and Daddie already answered the question. My question to you, the same question that was raised here by one of the other aldermen. Would you consider opening up in Wood Dale without a liquor license?
Again, that's, that's not Daddies business model. And, and they probably would not.
Well, let me ask you this other question. Does Daddie, is all their business that they own have gambling in their buildings?
Yes, Alderman.
Every single one?
To my knowledge, yes.
That is my downfall with the liquor license. There's got to be a way. And I was against this gambling and I'll tell you, all of a sudden, now we got people lining up here. And where, where was your location going to be at in Wood Dale?
Uh, one-twenty Irving Park Road.
The, the old what?
Next to US Cellar.
US Cellar? Okay, and my other concern about that, how is parking going to be issued there with Daddie if we grant this liquor license, actually both locations, how is that going to meet the requirement in the building code that you have to have so many parking spots? Right now, we have Marinos in there. We also have a Subway in there. And that place is pretty packed during lunchtime. So my question is, I don't think either of these businesses is going to meet the requirement for parking wherever they go. Because I will tell you, how many, let, let's look at the other place. How many parking spots are there there now?
Why don't, why don't? Thirty-five and none are being used.
Okay. Well, let's go at thirty-five and then if we get, we fill that down the line, we won't meet the requirement of parking. I'm just saying is that we also have to consider, not just the liquor license here, as aldermen and ladies. We have to think of the parking situation to add these businesses in that area with liquor license and gambling and the parking. They still have to obey by the city code of parking wherever they go. And I think the whole picture of this thing is that we are stepping away from that perspective of a parking issue here. We are talking about liquor license, but no one is thinking about the parking situation we may run into here. And then we'll have people complain, well, there's no more parking here and all that. So let's look at that picture too, before we give a final decision up there.
If you don't mind, I'd like to address the parking issue, at least regarding Wood Dale Station, which we are the owner of.
You got to give a name.
Kevin Thornton with Wood Dale Station and Right Management. That's okay, you don't have to get up.
You could, you could lift that up if you want.
Okay. And, it's okay. We have thirty-five parking spots in the front of the building. We have no retail tenants in seven years. So we have plenty of parking. We are actually going to add another eighteen parking spots on the east property line. It financially makes no sense for us to do it right now because I've got empty parking that's been sitting there for seven years. So from a parking standpoint, Wood Dale Station, we have no problem. They're only, Molly's Deli's only going to be taking fifteen hundred, no, I'm sorry, square foot? Thirteen hundred square feet. Thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. We couldn't park thirty-five people there if, thirty-five cars there if we wanted to. So right now, I've got plenty of, we've got plenty of parking. We are actually adding additional parking if this goes through. It financially makes no sense to add parking for a parking lot sits there empty ninety-nine percent of the time right now. Thank you.
Okay. I got to go to Alum and Winger.
Thank you. So that exact thing is what I was going to ask Mr. Thornton when I was recognized of, other than a failed pirate store, what has been there for how long has it sat empty? This building has empty storefronts from left to right. Seven years is my answer. That is a long time to have a property owner sit there with nothing filled. I do believe that having this establishment there, a small establishment, will start to allow things to, to develop. We have to do something there to get it moving. And these gentlemen are saying they're, they're there for at least five years. It's not going to be a six months. Let's try it and see what happens. So that's one of the main reasons why I want to give this a try. Thank you.
Alum and Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to get us back on track. We're almost having a mini zoning board hearing here. My first question is, I want to know if Representative Laura Tennyson finished her presentation for Daddies so that she got fair airtime with the rest of the gentleman?
Well, obviously, our biggest concern is that the council understand our business model and while it was a little bit jumbled because, you know, fielding questions and all that, it's, it's a pretty straightforward model. We're a small shop. Again, we're sixteen hundred, fifteen, a little under sixteen hundred square feet of space. We're not as concerned with the parking issue because, strictly because it is being placed in a strip mall that was designed to, for commerce. They were, they, they designed these places for cars and for people to come and, and go and, and we believe that that's a suitable location for our, our business. And to, to the effect that, you know, if, if Wood Dale is concerned about the liquor sales or the gambling, we're only anticipating about twenty-five percent of the total sales to come from alcohol and gaming combined.
Twenty-five percent of your sales?
That's what our estimate is at this point. We're, we're a restaurant first and foremost.
Okay. Alum and Smarsky.
Before all you aldermen and all women go thinking about giving it a chance, like Alderman Jacobs did say, we do have other, other establishments in this community that have been asking for liquor licenses. So before you go handing them out to people we don't have, that are not in this town and do not have established base here, you need to start thinking, you need to think about that also.
Okay. Again? Alum and, what's your name? Oh, Jacobs. Alum and Jacobs.
I have a question for both of you. First of all, Molly's, all these other, the Richards, the Coopers, the Elmers, did all these have a liquor license and gambling in them as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that is strictly because it's, if you have gaming, it's a requirement that you have liquor. You can't have gaming without beer and wine, in our case, without beer and wine. So we don't seek that. That's a requirement part of the package.
Okay, second question. How many, the design of your restaurant, how many people can you seat at one time?
We could seat generally about thirty-five is our number right in there. We've gone, it depends on the location. With this particular location, we'll be about.
Excuse me, for this location, we'll be about thirty-three, I believe. We haven't done the final drawings. Because we want to, there again, we want to be blessed and be welcomed into the community. Then we'll have our architect finish up and we'll get drawings and get them to Kevin and have them approve them.
Now, is that the total seating capacity or is just, is that just for the restaurant or is that for the gaming or?
That's, so we're about between thirty-five and forty total with gaming that works. We have about ten tables. We do three tops in the front. So if you come into our location, generally, there'll be, there could be, it depends on the square footage, of course. But we'll have a dining area in the front and we try to put our gaming to the, to the rear on the side. Five seats for gaming, thirty roughly seats in dining. Can go forty. If we have one location, if it's two thousand feet, then it will do forty-five, say.
And I have a question for Daddies too. What, as far as your restaurant, what's the seating capacity there?
Also similar to, to Mr. Buckley's restaurants.